Okay, it's 7 o'clock, so we will call to order the regular Danby Select Board meeting of March 11th. I would ask that you please rise and join me in the pledge to the flag and all that it stands for. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I will entertain a motion to set the agenda as printed.
Um, I'd like to add to it, anywhere that everybody feels comfortable, the, um, road foreman description, just to discuss it in public, the advertisement.
Okay, can we put that under the road commissioners' report?
Yeah, sure, we can do it right in there, same thing there.
And you had another item?
Um, no, I mean, I got that, and then just the minutes thing that, um...
Yeah. Anything else? I'll entertain a motion to set the agenda, including the foreman position under the road commissioners' report.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Motion is made and seconded. Clerk, would you please poll the board?
Steve?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay, let the record reflect that select board member White is not present. Okay, the motion is passed. And the next item of business will be to adopt the minutes of the regular February Select Board meeting.
I'll make the motion when we adopt them.
Is there a second?
Um, I wasn't part of it, so I'm not gonna...
Okay, so I'll second the motion. Is there any discussion on the February 11th minutes?
No.
There being no discussion, clerk, would you please poll the board?
Steve?
Yes.
Tom?
Epstein.
Brad?
So the minutes are read and approved. Okay, we have decided to, um, hold off on the March 4th organizational meeting minutes because there's a lot of, um, revision that needs to take place there. So that will be tabled for the moment. So what we are going to do, um, for our meetings this year is we are going to have time for the public comment up front, so that any members of the public wishing to comment on any of the agenda items can do that now, rather than, um, while the board is discussing motions. And that way, we can take your opinions into consideration when we have our deliberation. So are there any members of the public who wish to participate at this time? If you are muted, you need to press star 6 on your phone.
Graham?
Yes?
Muted, this is Lauren Decker.
Hi, Lauren.
Hi. Um, yes, I believe you have Green Mountain Power on the list, is that correct?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so that impacts our funding. And, you know, I'm curious to hear what you folks have to say about, or you've heard about it. Green Mountain Power did come out and speak to Bill and I about putting a telephone pole on our property. When I did walk to the site where they said they were going to put it, they were not aware that there was a spring fed well very close to it. You have a very basic map of the area. So that was a little concerning. Um, and then, you know, I've been reading a little bit more information about it lately, but to hear what you folks said of the telephone poles that they want to put in are like 10 feet taller than the existing ones. And that seems like a big difference. So those are my two initial concerns about Green Mountain Power and the project.
Okay, and are you aware that you can claim party status as being one of the landowners and participate in the Act 250 hearing?
Yes, and I could ask for a hearing, a site visit, is that true?
Right.
Yes, I am aware of that. I, you know, I guess the third thing is too, I just don't have a real good sense of how many trees they're gonna cut down. And, um, I know they're doing some underground stuff, and they're doing above ground holes. It's extensive, because it's going from this gap all the way up to the DMAT lines, it's pretty extensive.
And, um, have you looked at the application? You can view that online.
Yes, and I, I think for some... Um, I have looked at some of the, um, some of the responses from Mountain Power made to Act 250. And trying, you know, responding to some of their concerns, Act 250. It's still a little big and overwhelming here, as it probably could be. I don't know, have you looked at those things?
Um, we have, at least I have. And, um, the, uh, the Act 250 commission, I asked what the process was, and the response from Kim Lutchko, who is the district coordinator, was that the municipality automatically has party status to the Act 250 proceedings. That means the town can appeal the commission's decision, even if the town does not participate in the proceedings. If the town, parentheses, select board, has no concerns with the project as proposed or proposed permit, then no action is required. If however, the town does have concerns about the project as proposed, you can request a hearing and writing during the public comment period prior to the deadline. So that's what, that's what we'll be deciding, um, a little later in the meeting.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you for bringing that to our attention. Are there any other members of the public who wish to participate?
Yes, Annette Smith.
Hello, Annette.
Hello, um, I wanted to speak to two issues. I find it a little awkward to not be able to talk about an agenda item during your agenda item, but I'll first speak about the Green Mountain Power getting interesting for efficiency if you guys are to do it during the meeting. So, I only was copied on it today, I was apparently missed, but on the 9th, the Act 250 commission submitted a draft permit. Have you seen that?
I have not looked at it, no, I have not seen it.
Well, I came through, I emailed, I guessed for the town on the 9th, I got it today. The draft permit is pretty much, I guess, what Green Mountain Power would want. And they would like us to go through with that here. And also, I have something there that I am not satisfied with. My primary issue has to do with the impacts to the Act of course. But, you know, I've been trying to just talk to Green Mountain Power about this since 2019 to avoid you. However, they're not making it easy. So, I'll be pursuing these things on my own. I don't really feel like I have the opportunity to talk to you guys while you're talking about it. So, I would just, you know, point out that if you want to request a hearing, the deadline is March 29th, I suggest you look at the draft permit. They did, in their responses to the district coordinator's questions, answer the question about the pole height, which is 45 feet instead of 30 to 35, that is there now. And the one thing that I'm not seeing, that I would have liked to have understood, is how many trees they plan to cut and which trees. Act 250 currently will do a site visit. It seems to me that it makes logical sense for people with an interest affected to walk the road with them and have them plan out which trees actually to cut. It looks like they have to cut, perhaps, a fair amount of fairly large trees. And, and so, the other issue, one of the issues that I first was concerned about was the use of tent floor, you know, treated poles which shouldn't be used where they may come into contact with water supplies. They're now talking about using what's called a stock.
Yes, I read that.
And, and that also, for the areas that would be in the letlands, it would be copper napping, which they can't use for drinking water areas. So, um, the main issue is, this is a very complicated area. And, I honestly don't know if it'd be better to just do poles than to do the undergrounding. The undergrounding is what seems to be taking more trees down. So, um, and then the draft permit, looks like they would be doing this project any time for the next three years, so it wouldn't necessarily be this coming season. I would, one of the conditions I would like to see is that it not be done during draft. Because for those of us with sensitive water supplies, if it's bad and our wells or springs are low anyway, and they do something that changes the waterfalls, we wouldn't be able to connect the道. And that's what happens when OMA did their pump test. I had to spend $3,000 to get water, so did Heather with delight. And OMA's response was, "Not a problem, it was draft." And so, we've learned that lesson. And, um, Green Mountain Power doesn't seem to be willing to commit to not doing it during draft. And so, the question is, how do they go with draft? So, I mean, Brad, you know where it's at, right? With the town's water supply. I know where it's at, but my springs are low. So, I don't know if you would have a way to answer that question, but I think that that's an important one. And the story of this area is that springs vanish, they pop up, water travels long distances in this very complex cross径路. You just don't know what's gonna happen, maybe nothing will happen. It's, it's just, it's a total unknown and there's no way anyone can predict. And so, they are saying that they will give notification to the joiners when the work starts, that was another thing that I wanted to be sure of, so that we'd know. I'm not a joiner, I do have an interest affected, but I assume that someone would let me know. Ideally, the town would be informed, and then it would be posted to Front Porch Farm, which I see has over 400 residents now, and it's signed up. And so, I do think it's becoming a very effective bulletin board for our town. And so, if the town would agree to, you know, to post notification of when the work is beginning, that would be helpful to everyone in the valley here. So I think that's most of my points on that. And now, a separate issue, when you ready?
Okay, I've made notes on those things, and, um...
Um, so, my question is, does the town of Danby have a conflict of interest policy?
I have not seen one, I don't know whether or not we do.
It's a fairly standard thing that I think Vermont City and towns has to support. And in the, um, the informational meeting before the election, Tom was asked if he would recuse himself of issues having to do with his business, and he said yes. But since you have now made me the road commissioner, I think that it would be in everyone's interest, including Tom's, for there to be a clear policy for people to understand how the road commissioner is being in the position of deciding where to spend the town's money on road repairs, and then digging on sand and gravel and asphalt. And just have a policy, and I'm sure this is something that other towns have dealt with, I do not think this is an untended problem. But I do think that Vermont City and towns would offer guidance on how to craft the policy, so everybody understands upfront what the rules are. So nobody comes and accuses Tom of doing something after the fact that could be avoided if there is a conflict of interest policy specific to our road commissioner also being in the business of providing materials to the town and making decisions about where to use those materials.
Okay.
Is that something that you would be willing to investigate and report back on at the next meeting?
Yes, I don't have a problem with that. Did you want to add anything to that, Tom?
No, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. Okay, anything else?
Let me just look at your agenda, I wasn't quite prepared for it this way. I assume that these fleet permits are all the typical ones that you usually do.
They are.
And that points to the question, I did, Brad, report to you about a big truck on the paper road.
Yes.
It's something that I was asked to do under the prior select board, and I would report things to Lynn, and we pass it around to Paul. I never reported directly to Paul. How would you all like to handle it, Tom?
Um, first of all, let me say that I did refer immediately to Tom. And I also checked both ends of the road, and the road is posted at both ends. Tom, how would you like to handle that?
I guess the, the thing at the time is, when we post the roads, we're not trying to stop commerce for the state. We're trying to save our roads. And at the time of the posting, um, I believe it was about 22 degrees. So, with that type of thing, I mean, we, we have, we've always had a policy. This is going back, you know, well before my times. And that, as long as the companies call, check, and understand that when the roads are frozen, they can do, like the loggers get their logs out. The, um, you know, obviously, the oil companies, they don't call us and we don't control them at all. But most of the local...
I haven't reported anything about them. It's the, it's the unusual, I mean, this was a full and deep truck. I've never seen one on the road before. So that's the sort of thing that I have tended to, you know, giant tractor trailer trucks, those kinds of things that are just, you know, not normal.
Yeah, and I wouldn't know what he was doing on there, Annette, but, um, back to the thing...
My whole intention was identify the truck. Anytime I could find something that he could track down. So this time, the full and green truck was easy to track down. And I honestly hadn't been out for a while, so I didn't know the road conditions, but I heard that they were starting to break up. And I assumed that once we get into mud season, which we're definitely in right now, that we want to save the roads from big trucks like that. Is that, is that a correct interpretation?
Yeah, no, I mean, as of right now, I mean, no one, even the town trucks can't get on the backroads. And until, I mean, we're gonna get a freeze up, it looks like, over the weekend, and there's gonna be a few trucks, loggers, trying to get their stuff in and out. And, you know, Monday, Tuesday, it looks like they will probably be able to do that. And we're actually gonna try to put some gravel on a couple spots Monday, Tuesday. But like I said, we're trying to save the roads. We're not trying to make anyone's life just completely unbearable or make commerce not practical. So, obviously, we appreciate, obviously, we appreciate you keeping track of that, especially if they're tearing up the roads.
So, what process do you want me to follow? Do you want me to contact you directly, Tom? Or do you want me to contact Brad, as the Brad I was suing last time, too?
I, I mean, if, if you feel comfortable contacting Brad with that, he's usually very good at passing things on, so, and, and...
So, I wonder if I email, is that okay with you, Brad?
Yes, that's a good way to do it.
And I'm not trying to shut down commerce, I assure you of that. But I'm concerned about the quality of roads.
Oh, no, and I 100% am behind you on that, is, um, we, we don't need to destroy the roads for the couple weeks of mud season.
Okay, that's all I have today, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Are there any other members of the public who wish to comment at this time?
Sure, this is Dimitri. I live on the White Bird Drive, and I met with, um, on Monday.
Hi, Dimitri.
I'm asking for two things. I'm pretty busy with Lynn and Doug White stopping by when the conditions were real bad. One is, I live on top of a relatively steep hill, and, you know, with the weather, it was very icy. There were cars just sliding down, and my friend, Kim, I just almost slid down to the ditch. Lynn, a lot of Doug, that just pictured. So my first request is for the town to put some kind of barrier on Green Hill Road Square in the White Bird Drive. Just so that if there's ice conditions and somebody starts sliding, they're going and documenting. And the second, Tom looked at that hill itself, it looks to be less than 9 degrees angle. Wants the snow melt for somebody to come back out and evaluate, if it's possible, for that portion of the road taken over by the town. It's already wide enough, as wide as the Green Hill Road, so there shouldn't really be any issues for the trucks going out. The only concern was, make it flat enough, maybe take a few trees on top of it, so the trucks can turn around and then go down. But it seems that throughout the year, that portion of the road is most of the concern. I know in the past, when I spoke with Lynn, I asked what could be done for the town to take over White Bird Drive. It's been practical, and not so effective. So I've been taking discussion with Tom. It's like that portion of the road that's more or less already meets the state standards, might be a good position for the town to take over, not having to do anything really, except when a block passes by, just do an extra portion of the road, and that's it.
Would you like to respond to that?
Yeah, no, Dimitri, I, as I said, um, you know, as you guys are taxpayers up in there, you know, we want to work with you on anything that is practical for the town. Um, I think right now, to say that that road meets any standard is a little premature. Like I said, you know, it was a wide road, that first section. Obviously, you understood the rest of the road is completely, you know, it's a goat path. And like, I, you know, we should, we should look at it, you know, you should talk to your neighbors and find out if everybody is even on board to discuss this farther. But, um, I guess the only thing I would, you know, correct you on is the, the area that you may have the width there, but as far as meeting the standards, it's not quite, you know, you know, it's premature to say that without an engineer's, um, study on it.
Yeah, understood. That's on it, and when everything melts, we'll just share with the neighbors if we like to proceed then. We could hire an engineer to just give us an analysis of what needs to be done. If it makes sense, we'll press these and reach back to the town. If it doesn't, we'll keep it at this. But I still would like the town, with that kind of, that barrier on the bottom of the hill, just to prevent an accident.
Yeah, no, I mean, as, as we looked at it, Dimitri, um, that was, that was a point, you know, taken that I, I think does make sense. I guess my only concern was the, it is the spot that your plow guy puts all his snow, and it's gonna block him on that. Is, you know, as long as you guys, as your group, are happy with putting a barrier there, we could, we could do that. And we, you know, obviously, this late spring, early summer, we could, we could do that. But, um, yeah, and the other stuff, I mean, we'll, we'll discuss in depth later.
Sounds good, yes. I mean, I think in terms of where the block obviously is now, it's more of the change of behavior. We can definitely stick with Cameron, that should not be an issue. And then once everything melts, I'll try to face with you. And we'll just revisit a little later, but I think the barriers definitely need it.
All right, great, thanks.
Okay, it sounds good. Any other members of the public wish to speak? Okay, then we will move along with the rest of our agenda. The next item would be to hear a motion to appoint Tom Fuller and Steve Haynes as negotiating team for the union.
I'll make the motion.
And I'll second it.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Somebody?
Somebody?
Just asking for a new conference.
Oh.
Oh. Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes. Next item on the agenda is the post office box. For many years, the town of Danby had a lockbox in the post office, and a prior board switched that to a mailbox out by the road. Personally, I don't feel that's a very safe thing to have with the important papers that come in. There's deeds that come in to be recorded, there's ballots that come in, there are checks that come in, there are checks that go out. And the tax bills right now are being sent to the treasurer's personal mailbox. So, I would like to hear a motion that we can discuss this about having a post office box.
I'll make the motion.
And I'll second it.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. So, the research on it is, the post office box costs $92 a year plus an $8 heat charge, which is a one-time charge. So if we were to act on this, it would be a $100 charge. And then next year, it would go down to $92 unless postal rates change.
Now, is that a big enough box for...
It's, they actually saved the town box, um, just because they wondered if someday the town might come back to...
Yeah, because that's the bigger ones, yeah.
Yeah.
Why was it done away with to begin with?
It's my understanding that it was done away with because the clerk put in for mileage to go to the post office. Which I think we could have a conversation about. And it was...
Well, given the importance of the documents that we're receiving, I don't see why we wouldn't have a box at the post office. Because all it would take is for somebody to hit the mailbox or a snowplow to go through and knock the mail on the ground out here, and then it's lost.
Right, and we got documents that are...
And, you know, during the summer months, we have people parked all up and down the road here, so we have no idea what curiosity might do. You know, it's, I just don't think it's a professional way to handle town business.
Yeah, no, I, I'm thinking the same, is it makes more sense.
Okay, clerk, would you please poll the board?
Steve?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Okay, the next item is fleet permits. We have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 of them.
Now, do we have to go through them individually, or can we...
We have nine. We have nine?
Can we just look at them all and make the motion that we?
We can look at them all and make a motion to do all of them. Have you looked at them, or?
I've, I've looked at them, and I'm, I'm, I, I mean, I'll make the motion that we approve all of them, um, that are listed here.
And I'll second it.
Is there any discussion?
The only thing is, I'm wondering is if you should, for the record, since there's people on the phone, if you should read them?
If I should read them off?
Yeah, why don't you do that?
Okay, the first one is Cardinal Logistics, the second one is HOP Energy, Structural Wood Corporation, Belden Construction, Proctor Gas, Hunter Excavating, RK Miles, and New England Quality Service. Clerk, would you please poll the board?
Steve?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Okay, next item on the agenda is a report from Shelley Taylor on the Regional and Local Planning Commission.
Hello?
Hi, Shelley.
We'll start with the, um, hi, we'll start with the regional, there was, I missed the meeting in January during, due to a conflict, and there was no meeting, um, yet for February, and we will be meeting at the Royal Regional, um, Planning Commission on the 16th, which is next Tuesday, and I will be attending that. And on the local, we voted back in January to meet quarterly, so our next meeting will be the first Thursday of April. And if the select board has anything specific they would like us to focus on, um, I can take that back to the board.
Okay, we do have an advertisement out on Front Porch Forum for all of the vacancies that can come up, and there are two seats on the Planning Commission, so, um, I guess if you're meeting on the first, you'll still be meeting with your old board.
Right.
And we would encourage anyone who's interested to, um, put in a letter to us, care of the town clerk, prior to or on April 7th, and we will consider them for appointment to the Planning Commission. And I have also had discussion with you and Bob Tobin about doing a job description for the implementation coordinator, so I would like you to address that at your meeting.
Okay.
And get back, get back to us.
I do have a question. Back in, um, November, December, I forgot, um, the board, I asked the board to make policy if they insisted that we should meet via phone or Zoom meetings, and that was done at that meeting, so the select board is now meeting in person, does that also apply to the planning commission?
I would say that's your choice.
That's what I wanted to hear, because when we discussed it last, it was definite that all meetings would be conducted, you know, by a non-in-person meeting, so if that's, if that's fine with the select board, I'll pull my, the planning commission and see how they want me.
Okay, does anybody on the select board have a, a issue with that?
I think if they want to meet in person, they should meet in person.
Yeah, I mean, just, you know, practice the guidelines and...
Right.
Absolutely.
This, this room is certainly big enough, we have extra tables, um, and you can safely meet here. And, you know, people are getting vaccines, things are beginning to open back up. Anything else, Shelley?
That's it, all I got.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Shelley.
So, the next item on the agenda is Green Mountain Power, and their, uh, two, Act 250 application to do work up on Old Otis Road, and we have heard some concerns expressed from Lauren Dever and Annette Smith, I think you've all made notes about that, I certainly have. Um, so, the Act 250 Commission basically says if we don't want party status, we don't do anything. Um, I'm willing to entertain any discussion that you might have about this.
Well, my only concern with my end of it is, I haven't been party to, you know, I've listened in on the meetings on it, and, and, you know, have, you know, the concerns, but I don't want to, you know, request a hearing if we're, you know, can get more information without a hearing. And I, I, I saw it on the agenda, and I wasn't aware, so I, I know we don't really have time to kick this one down the road, because...
Right, it's coming up on the 29th.
I personally don't have any issue with the project itself, uh, I mean, the height of the poles, that's an easy answer, they had to increase the height of the poles because you've added extra cables underneath of it, and to keep the clearance needed in between the poles, you had to raise them. Uh, as far as what they're using on them, you know, it looks like if they're putting the socked poles in, so they're protecting the aquifer, and I think this is just another example, they're trying to improve the quality of service, plus they're trying to improve the work conditions for their employees. I know, I want to say it was a year and a half ago, maybe two years ago, we got a, a postcard in the mail, asking us to identify our water sources for them, if they were within a certain distance, or if we had concerns, and, you know, I don't think this has been a, all of a sudden it's right here in our face, last minute deal, this has been going on for a while.
Right, and certainly the individual homeowners have the opportunity to claim party status and, uh, act accordingly. So I would say that unless, um, if you haven't had a chance to read that, um, unless you read it and find something, um, you know, then we could have a special meeting and...
Right, yeah, no, I'm, I'm good with that.
Okay, then we will move on, and the next item would be to appoint an attorney. And I sent a memo, or a email to the select board members, did you all get that?
Yes.
Research that I did about local attorneys, and, um, I'm willing to entertain a motion to appoint an attorney.
Um, can I see the?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Um, I want to make sure I get his name, James Barlow, right? I, I make the, um, motion that we, um, hire James Barlow, um, attorney at law, um, for the town's attorney.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion on the motion? I would, um, just like to enter into the record that Mr. Barlow is the town attorney for the town of Dorset. He was formerly the staff attorney with the Vermont League of Cities and Towns, uh, for anyone who's interested, they can visit his website, which is V T L O C A L G O V L A W dot com, that's VermontLocalGovLaw.com, and, um, you will see that, um, he only represents municipalities, he does all of the municipality work, including, um, tax sales, property valuation hearings, um, union negotiations, anything to do with a town. And his rate is considerably less than, um, what we have been paying our town attorney in the past. He charges $150 an hour, and we have been paying $225 an hour. We also looked at a number of other attorneys, and their rates were also higher. Any other discussion? Clerk, would you please poll the board?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Okay, now we have the road commissioner's report, so I'll turn it over to Tom Fuller.
All right, um, well, I want to start it off with our, um, advertisement for the road foreman job description, um, it's actually one that was 2016, was adopted by the Danby Select Board, they did a great job of writing it at the time, the only thing we're thinking of adding to this is, um, under the mowing of the right of ways, we're adding and cutting brush in, in the right of ways. Um, we're also asking in, or we're putting in this, um, job description that they, um, will attend meetings as needed, um, and we're going to add to the CDL that they have a DOT physical under their, um, I guess their skills, um, but besides that, it was, um, adopted in May 12th, 2016 by the Danby Select Board, and it was the Town of Danby Road Foreman Job Description, and, um, I would like to make sure we, or I would like to put that out to, um, post for advertisement, um, probably tomorrow, if we could get it out, um, or Monday, if the worst case scenario.
Okay, so do I hear a motion to re-adopt the road foreman job description with the additions of adding, cutting brush, attending meetings, and DOT physical?
I'll make the motion.
Uh, I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded, is there any other discussion?
The only thing that I would ask Tom is that you check to see, I know before, when we were advertising for Donnie's on-call position, we had to give 10 days with...
We, and I did, I spoke with the union already on...
Okay.
On that, and, um, I, I formally offered it at the time, so it's, this is ready for posting.
Then, I have no issue posting it.
Yep, no.
Clerk, would you please poll the board?
Steve?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes. Um, I guess the next, um, thing, we preemptively put some gravel out on most of the roads that we could get on, um, I was, we were sure to help a little bit where the colder days, to be able to get it out there, but hopefully we can get through the, the mud season without a whole lot more, um, roads just completely breaking up. Um, all of the equipment is running and running good. On next week, when things firm up a little bit, we're going to start our, our brush cutting for the year, um, it's a good time to get a lot of that started. Um, we're going to use our call-in guy for the hours available for the mud season and treat it like a, a snowstorm to help facilitate to get to anybody that we can, if, if we can help them out. In some cases, the roads are breaking up so quickly and bad that we're not going to be able to, um, completely fix your road, but we want to make it passable. Um, on to the brush cutting end, um, we're going to use the, um, in any of the higher traffic areas for the traffic control, the town of Danby actually owns Muti certified traffic lights that are portables that set up for job locations, they were purchased with the town of Timothè several years ago, and Timothé has been storing them, and Danby has never used them.
I think we did use them once.
Did you?
Down, uh, by Margos.
Okay, yep. And so, but for road activity, is the brush cutting, they're, they're fairly quick setup, so that to alleviate the fact we, or to me and crew, we don't have flaggers, you know, so for the, for the higher traffic areas, say the Brook Road, when we get to that, any of the areas that, so we are going to try to do that, so be aware if you're driving along and you see signals that there is actually stoplights set up on our, on our roads during working hours. Um, I'm meeting with Stephanie Burke this week, coming up for the Better Back Roads, um, grants, um, we, I spoke with Chris Taff on our Class 2 paving grant work, um, and our Structures Grant, um, I did start having the crew write in a notebook at the end of every day when they go to punch out where they brought any gravel that day, or any projects they did, so we actually have, as a board, can look back at the month if we have any questions of where they've been and what they've been doing, just to help us, you know, as a board, to, to answer to the public what, where our crew is, and what they've been doing, and how much material we've been putting down.
So we don't just have a time card with hours on there?
Right, right, we, we have a notebook now, started with, with description of the day.
Excellent.
Um, and I spoke with the union rep this week, and we're gonna negotiate next week, as long as my co-negotiator is, um, ready to, um, can meet with them, because they are open to meet next week too, and we'll pick a time and hopefully get that underway. And that's about it for the whole five days.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh, next item is a furnace for the town garage, and I believe Steve's done some research on that.
Yeah, and I sent you an email, I hope you got it, because I don't seem to be having luck with my email today.
Oh, I, actually, I have not had a chance to look at emails since this morning, so if it came in, I didn't see it.
I've been talking with Webb to get a price on a Numac furnace, which is a wood-oil combination furnace, it has dual thermostats, so that you can set different temperatures for the wood and for the oil, and that way we can have, when the crew is working and they have time to deal with a fire, they can build a wood fire, and on days like the big storm when it was so cold and nobody had time to work on the fire, the oil furnace could then kick on and keep it at a lower temperature, but keep it warm enough in the garage to where, when the trucks are parked, they'll thaw out, and I think if we can get the trucks thawed out and dried off at night, that would help alleviate some of our issues with them. I don't have a price right now, because the fellow I was talking to wasn't available today, he was supposed to get back to me with the price, but like I said, my email is not quite right today for some reason, and...
Okay, so would you like us to put this on the agenda for April?
Yeah, I think it would be better if it was on there for April, the only question I would have with it is, how, how far do you want to approach this? Do you want me to try and get quotes from, uh, like, high-tech for installation, or do you just want to price on the furnace itself and...
No, the, the whole project.
Yeah, no, I think we, we need to know probably what it's going to cost us to...
We have, um, you know, the insurance company has told us that, um, that is a situation that needs to be corrected, and just as we did with the renovation of the town office, I'd like to see three loads.
Yep.
And I believe that's our policy, anyway.
And with that, we'll, um, we're going to want to put in new ductwork in there so that we can get heat blowing on both sides of the garage, and I'd also like to see it plumbed into the office out there, because there's no heat right now.
Hmm.
Or at least that was my understanding, the last time I talked to Charlie about it, is there was, you know, the furnace itself didn't... is there was, you know, the furnace itself didn't blow into that office.
Yeah, so, um, so we should have a good heating system. And one of the other deficiencies is there's, uh, no second means of egress from the office. So that needs to be addressed also. Maybe not immediately.
I didn't know if the plumber was going to do that.
No, no, but, you know, when you said office, that triggered my mind about that. And they had talked about maybe closing in the front of the garage and, uh, putting another door on, but we'll get to...
Let's, let's, let's stick with task at hand, Steve.
I can bring my chainsaw down. We'll have another door.
Real quick. Okay, so that would be good.
So you think for April, we, you'll have a quote from, at least the furnace? Hopefully the plumbers get back to you.
I will do my best on it.
Thank you. So then I guess we will move right along to reviewing and signing the TA 60 Annual Financial Plan for Town Highways. Have you had a chance to look at this, Tom?
No.
Well, these are road related, so I'll let you...
Did you get a chance to look at these?
No.
I guess my only thought, um, I do have a question on our Class Two and Class Three, and our winter, non-winter numbers. Um, do we need to do these immediately? Or can we do these in a, I mean...
This was added after I wrote out the initial agenda, so I don't know what it says on there. Is there a deadline?
Well, I mean, these we got to have before we meet with Chris on, on our, on our stuff, which, um, I don't foresee that we, I, we got to have them before our April, so we can't hold off till April. But I, I really wanted to make sure on these, I guess we, I, they, they...
How many signatures do they need?
I think they need the majority of the board, don't they?
Yeah. Yeah, I guess, um, I, I don't, I, I'd like to have more than two seconds to review these. Um, so I, I'm good with signing these later on if we can do it as, I mean, it's more or less signed in a document. I don't know if we need a meeting for it, as long as everybody signs it and at their thing.
So I would make the motion that after Tom reviews it and lets us know that everything is okay, that we can individually come down here and sign it.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any other discussion on it?
Steve?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes. Okay, the next item on the agenda is pay for the, um, election workers and the town clerk's responsibility relating to that. Um, up until, I believe, two years ago, Coette, can you correct me if I'm wrong?
Yeah.
Up until two years ago,
Three.
Uh, the town clerk, as well as the other people working at the poles, were all paid for that day. And then an administrative decision was made not to pay the town clerk for the services that day. And I received a question from the town treasurer wondering whether or not to pay the town clerk, saying it's a new board, there may be new policies. So the clerk was being paid at the rate of sixteen dollars an hour and the workers were being paid at the rate of fourteen dollars an hour, which is less than some of the other positions in town, like auditors and listers and so forth. So I would entertain a motion, um, in regard to this.
So I guess, uh...
Wait, before you make the motion, I, the town clerk, it's been thirty thousand dollars a year. You have to turn it down. You don't have to pay her extra for doing that.
Um, I, I guess my question is, is, so we're paying her on top of her day or we're paying her for the extra part of her day?
We're paying her on top of her day. I mean, the town clerk's position, just like the treasurer's position, is a salary for the year.
The town clerk is paying to do this job, so why doesn't she have to pay her extra? We already paid her thirty thousand dollars a year to do this job. And if you want extra time, you take it out during the week. I mean, she'll work for three days a week anyway.
Um, how many hours is it that we're talking about?
Fifteen, sixteen.
It's a very long day.
It's a long day for a lot of people. We already paid her thirty thousand dollars a year to do this job. If you can't do this job, I think we're very likely to lose the place.
Um, I...
Make the motion, we don't have to pay her extra for this job because she's already been paid for it.
Okay, Doug has made a motion not to pay the town clerk. Is there a second?
Um, I guess my, my...
Not hearing a second.
My question is, typically she works eight hours, is it?
Nine to three, when you work.
So six hours? Um, and she's working sixteen. I mean, I, I don't see any problem with paying her for the ten that is beyond her, her actual working hours.
She's starting to ask, don't you pay her for every little thing we have her doing? If you're paying her thirty thousand dollars, how much more do you have to pay her for this few, for a few hours extra a week? I mean, look at, uh, the treasurer, he works a lot, he's spending the week. If you won't get paid no goddamn extra when you're spending the year, then everything has to be done. I mean, this thing, this thing's right. You guys, you guys, you just give in to goddamn you doing everything. But I know I'm going to be on the other side, we'll head to what the hell everyone's doing. I know I ain't got no goddamn say in it.
So it's six and... So the extra would be a hundred and fifty dollars, um, for the, for the day extra on top of... So her, her total pay would end up being thirty thousand, one hundred and fifty as opposed to thirty thousand?
What are the responsibilities? What are the extra responsibilities? Coette, could you speak to that?
Well, we have to operate the tabulator. We have to make sure that it's been set up before we bring it in here. Uh, there's a lot involved in it. We were here through COVID so people could come in and vote. I mean, there, you know, there's a lot. You have to keep an eye on the tabulator. Somebody has to check people in. Somebody has to check people out. It's a long day. Plus, if someone comes in and wants to register their dog or the phone rings or if someone comes in to research...
So the town clerk's office is open during the same time?
It wasn't this, this last election, but it's usually open.
Because lawyers, I want to do something fifteen hour day. You have to prepare to put in twenty hours a day. You don't get an order to pay.
This is Tim Karen. Can I ask a question?
Yes.
All the, all the items that the legislature identified, aren't they just what the town clerk's supposed to do during an election?
And that's a good question, Tim. I, I was wondering what the description really is of, of, of the clerk in our, in our, you know, when you run for the position. That is a good question.
Yeah, the statute...
Yeah.
A lawyer for the job will begin an election, right?
The statute says that the town clerk is the election official.
She's not elected worker. She's not elected worker. The clerk pays thirty thousand dollars. That, that's, she figures out about thirty dollars a month.
I said she is by statute the election official, which means the town clerk is charged with the responsibility of running the election.
Now, that sounds to me like all of the things that were described are part and parcel with the job description. Overseeing tabulators, getting out the equipment, you know, blah, blah, blah. It doesn't seem to me like we should be compensating over and above for something that is standard. Or prior to her responsibility to this election. She doesn't like it? She shouldn't be in this office?
Okay, so I still have not heard a motion in...
Well, I guess...
Doug made a motion which didn't get a second. We need to have a motion on the floor before we can have discussion.
Well, our other thing is to not change the policy in hand, right?
Right.
So if we don't move on anything, the policy's not changed at this time?
Correct. Okay, if there's no motion, then we will move on.
Um... If she doesn't like it, she can do, do, turn it down.
Okay, I do not hear a motion, so we will move on, which is any other business found necessary when met. And the only thing I have under that is to remind people as we have posted around town and on Front Porch that, um, it's that time of year when people who are interested in being appointed to the various jobs around town should submit a letter of application. And we ask for those to be in by the 7th of April. Attention, town clerk. Are there any other items of new business? If there are none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make it.
I'll second it.
Clerk, would you poll the board?
Steve?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Doug? Brad?
Yes. Well, we asked several times, Doug.
Identify yourself.
Okay, meeting is adjourned.